My name is Lynn Striebel and I'm with law firm of Walsh Paloochy. I've been working with the owners and the developers, the property that we're discussing this afternoon. We very much appreciate the opportunity to present this application for the first time to you all. We did have the opportunity to talk to the Reston Association staff and had a discussion with them. We've also had the opportunity to talk to Hickory Cluster residents. We're going to continue to work with them. And we're currently processing a series of applications through Fairfax County. And as you may figure, the staff coordinator is Mary Ann Ott. She does most of the Reston applications. Been working with her and the rest of the staff. And going through a series of submissions, we have another one coming up and we have a few updates that we'll share with you this afternoon. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Just to give a little bit of a broad overview, we're going to be talking this afternoon about Fellowship House. You're probably familiar with Fellowship House. It's located at Lake Anne. It's 240 units. The buildings that are there, they're actually two buildings. They were built in 1971 and 1976. It meets the needs of seniors. It provides affordable housing for seniors. It's owned by a nonprofit at this time. The objective is to replace those units, replace those two buildings with one building, the same number of units, and the objective is to allow the people that live there today to live in the new building. In fact, as you'll hear this afternoon, we're going to face the construction to allow that to happen so that people do not have to move except from the existing building to the new building. So with that, I would like to introduce Michael Schoyer, who's going to talk a little bit more about the current Fellowship House, and then we'll talk about our plans for development. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for taking the time to meet with us. We really appreciate it. As she said, my name's Mike Schoyer. I am on the board of Fellowship Square Foundation, the overall owner of Lake Anne Fellowship House. We're certainly not strangers to Reston. We also own the units at Hunter's Woods Senior Development. And while it's not a topic today, just let you know that we'll probably be back because we're undergoing a complete refinance and rehabilitation over the next two years of Hunter's Woods also. Our mission is simple. It has been to provide affordable housing for seniors. It's what we've done. It's what we have. We have four other properties that implement that mission, and we hope to continue that here. We have worked hard over the last couple of years to find a way to make that work. I think many of you are aware, for the last two years, we attempted several ways to totally renovate the property, which is in need of physical improvements, obviously. And it became apparent to us that in its current financial and physical configuration, it's not economically feasible to do it as it exists today and would require a total revamping of our mission in order to do that. So with this, we decided to seek someone some help that has more experience in this and has what we would call, of course, deeper pockets. And we went out to select a nonprofit, another nonprofit with a similar mission, but much more experience than Fellowship Square Foundation has. And we were successful to enter into a partnership agreement today with Community Preservation Development Corporation, which is a highly experienced nonprofit developer in the Washington area, not unknown to Reston, as they were the overall developers for Island Walk, which we consider a successful renovation that meets the needs of low and moderate income citizens in our community. So you're not here to listen to me talk. I'm going to introduce the team. And you know, I love to come to meetings like this, but I can say I'm the only one not getting paid to do this. And so we have a full team today, and it's appreciated. And I'd like to introduce Ms. Suzanne Welch, Vice President of Real Estate for Community Preservation Development Corporation. And the board, please understand that the board is willing to do everything we can to meet our mission. And as a resident of Reston myself since 1984, we have that commitment. We're embedded in the community. We want to be here. We want to do what's right. So thank you for your time today.
So again, my name is Suzanne Welch, Vice President of Real Estate for Community Preservation. Preservation is an important word. I would so focus on that. Development Corporation. And we're excited to be partnering with Fellowship on this project. We are a premier affordable housing developer in the region. We have over 5,000 units ranging from Richmond up to Baltimore. Next slide. So in coming into this project, some of you may recall that several years ago Fellowship tried to come up with a way to preserve the affordability of the units. And in that proposal, they were only able to come up with preservation of 140 of the units, and the rest was market rate. That was not a proposal that was embraced by the community. And so we are here now with a proposal that will replace all 240 units, but it's a complicated proposal. So let me walk you through what our goals were and then show you how we were able to do it. So our goal is to have something that is compatible with the design of Lake Anne. We are very familiar with Lake Anne. We wanted to introduce the opportunity for homeownership on the site, not just all rental, but homeownership on the site. And we've been able to achieve that with that introduction. We have a balance of a step down of the units. So design-wise, it's not a big block that covers the entire site, but it steps down towards the Hickory Cluster, which is the transition to the existing development. And I will let you know, we've had two meetings with Hickory Cluster. I'm happy to see we have some Hickory Cluster residents here. Next slide. So this is the existing site. In the green, you see the two existing buildings. Next slide. And what we, that's the massing drawing of it, so you can see its height. Next slide, please. So you will see, we were building an eight-story building to one side, to the Village Road side, while we maintain the existing building and the residents in the existing building. We've made presentations to the residents. They are a wonderful, engaging community. Overhundred residents come to our meetings. And they're excited about only having to move once, not twice, like not having to completely somewhere else in the community and then have to come back. In this plan, then, when our building is complete, next slide, the existing buildings would be demolished. And then we would convey the rest of the site to a developer who would build, next slide, a two-over-two. And you have a better, in your packet that we passed out, you have a more current colored site plan for that. Can I have the next slide? So I would like to actually turn over, since this is a design review board, I'd like to turn over this now to David Stempel, who's with Gremmon Parker, who's our architect, so he can walk you through the design elements of the project.
Good afternoon. My name is David Stempel with the architecture firm of Gremmon Parker, as Suzanne mentioned. We were tasked with looking at the community, looking at Reston, looking at Lake Anne for design inspiration, including looking at the architecture of particular Charles M. Goodman. As a side note, my son lives in a Charles M. Goodman condo in DC. I'm very familiar with being in the architecture of Goodman. I grew up in the DC area in and around Silver Spring and Potomac. It's an architecture that I think is very inspiring. In particular, we looked at Hickory Cluster and other elements, other buildings in Lake Anne. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, go back. One of the things that's very immediately apparent is the emphasis of structure, the emphasis of horizontal, of verticals, and the emphasis of large areas of glass and simple, straightforward, maybe perhaps not simple, but a relatively minimalist palette is very obvious throughout the architecture of Lake Anne. Next slide, please. We looked at the Reston Association design standards for fenestration windows. Next slide, please. We also looked at the design standards for color suggestions for elements such as doors, windows, trim. Next slide, please. And we also looked at the fenestration of different buildings. In this case, we looked at the corner windows and the way Heron House is so dramatically stepped against the sky. And on the left of this slide is a corner of the proposed Lake Anne House building with corner windows and the emphasis, and horizontals and verticals emphasized. We also looked at the Crescent at Lake Anne. Again, horizontals, verticals emphasized, and an in-and-out-ness to the facade. And on the left, again, a piece of our building where we're looking at those, incorporating those elements. This slide is entitled elevation studies. It is just that. This was the very first, I believe it actually says option one. On subsequent slides, we looked at a variety of different color overlays and material overlays on massing. This is the very, very first one that we looked at. Next slide, please. We also, in after meeting with, in particular, the Hickory Cluster neighbors and with the Fairfax County, we knew there would be multiple studies and it would be worth looking at other options. This is what we referred to as option two. We've had quite, oh, sorry, not quite. Sorry. This is what has been referred to as option two. The horizontals, verticals, perhaps more strongly emphasized, bronze windows. This option, not here to present a fact, is in, I don't have a poll to show you, but this has been best received thus far from the meetings we've had. Again, as a sort of a straw poll results. And option three, a little bit darker scheme, has also been presented and reviewed. Before I move on, I just want to emphasize that, as you all know, and I know there are architects and designers, landscape architects here, design is an iterative process. We listen to comments and suggestions, and we create options for review. I hope that the elevations demonstrate the interest in local architecture, particularly the horizontals and verticals and the color making, a building that blends in in terms of the color palettes and materials. Next slide, please. This is the view from Village Road at North Shore in the option two color scheme. And this is the same view in the option three. I feel a little bit like an optometrist, better at the best. This is if you were, let's say, flying a drone, following Cameron, Baron Boulevard, you're up in the air. This view is in the option two color scheme. And we looked at, we took an overhead view in parts of the, you could see the building. If you were actually in a car, in a vehicle, on Baron Cameron, you'd be looking through a screen of trees, and you wouldn't see, for instance, the descending garden here or the entry to the garage. That view would be obscured if you're down low, but this was the view that we had created from the model to look at the fenestration, not what you can and can't see from Baron At the entry to Lake Anne, right at where Village Road enters, this is peeking through the existing trees at the corner of the building. And we have a series of slides that talk about the distance from property lines and the distances to curves on, I'm sorry, on Village Road and Baron Cameron Boulevard. Again, these are site sections through our architectural model with the approximate dimensions And finally, this is the site plan that shows the intended Lake Anne building, a common green space, and the two-over-two development on the rest of the site. This site plan has gone through several iterations to make it more acceptable to Fairfax planning and make it a little bit more, make the streets much more straightforward and to make sure that we, that all of the streets on the turning radiuses comply with first responder, fire, emergency service, turning radiuses.
Please, can you move your attention to the handout?
Yes.
Committing a second sheet?
As Lynn is indicating on the second sheet, this is, when we submitted this, it wasn't in a rendered situation. This is the exact same view rendered, which provides a little more detail and clarity to the intended development. The entry to the site is where it is today. This is two-way traffic, and the main entry to the intended Lake Anne House is here. There is a park that is in between the development for seniors for Lake Anne and the two-over-twos. All of the circulation in the site is, in this drawing, two ways, and all of the two-over-twos are rear-loaded parking. There is loading for, loading and service for the Lake Anne House is tucked here, and there is a, it's not a ramp, although it is descending. It's following the grade, and this, as it follows the grade and descends down, it is how you access the garage, which is under the eight-story building. The building has two courtyards, one which will be a little bit more active, one which will be a little bit more quiet in terms of the intended uses. And one of the courtyards has an access to the garden area, which follows the descending drive.
North Shore?
Yes, thank you. On North Shore, at grade on North Shore is an entrance to the building. Residents will be able to come and go from the building directly on North Shore. This animates the sidewalk. It makes the residents have a direct connection to the, it allows the residents to have a direct connection to the rest of Lake Anne. They don't have to go all the way around if they choose not to. And that is, this is the current layout for Village Road and the future, the intended future. That's, we've come into that setback.
When we made the presentation to the county some months, weeks ago, the main building was much closer to the road, was it not? It seems to have been shifted away from.
It's entirely possible that that drawing had the future road alignment, which made it look closer, but the building has not changed location on the site.
So they were proposing realigning the road? Oh, that was, that planned.
Exactly. The Crescent's plan included the realignment of Village Road.
That was major, rather deceptive, because it looked like it was sitting right on top of the road.
Understood. And we have gone back and forth as to which way to represent Village Road, the possible future or existing, but this is. Having said that, if you look at the first page of the handout, those red dimensions are to the future curb line if the road is aligned, realigned. That black line that's sort of running through the green area is the future curb line. And you can see that it's 60 feet plus or minus at one end and 40 feet at one side or the other, even when the road would be realigned.
If.
That, the cover sheet also demonstrates that the curve on Village Road is 25 feet from the curb line back to the building front.
Maybe we'll continue with our presentation, and then we'll, and you can finish, when we finish the ask questions, if that would work. I'd like to introduce.
Hi.
Howard Katz of NVR, who will talk about some materials that we were not able to fit within the slide presentation when we had to download it for today.
Thank you, Suzanne. My name is Howard Katz. I'm a regional market manager with NVR. NVR is the number four biggest builder in the country. We're located here in Reston, headquarters. We sell one out of every three thousands in the Washington metropolitan area, so we're pretty dominant here. I have Jack Chudivan here with me from our architecture department. I think in sheets three or four, you'll see the elevations currently proposed for Lake Anne. And just have a larger architectural view, the lack of weight of the product. Just from a site plan standpoint, again, you drive in the North Shore entrance, you'll go to the right to the 240 senior housing. To the left, we have 70 stacked townhomes. The units fronting on North Shore Drive, there's a little terrace wall that brings you up to the site there, two-foot, no, a little four-foot wall, again, activating the streetscape along North Shore Drive. We have a muse area with units fronting on the muse in the center of the site. And then off to the left, there's a row of stacked towns that are fronting on Hickory This is product that has been built in Marketplace over the last few years very successfully. We're very excited about the site and working with Fellowship House and CTDC. Jack, you want to come up and talk briefly about the architecture?
Thanks, Howard. As Howard said, I'm Jack Chudivan. I'm one of the architects who works for NVR. We're glad to have the opportunity to be able to present this. Well, Howard said, present this to you. Well, Howard said we have built these successfully in the marketplace in the major metropolitan area. We haven't really quite built this elevation yet in this particular style. We look forward to this opportunity to be able to do that. Kind of what we did, we looked at all the work that Gremmon Parker's done and Dave and his team in terms of contextual research of the architecture. And how can we not necessarily replicate that, but kind of play to that and maybe enhance it a little bit or be a little different. But understanding this isn't going to be a big multifamily building and then a bunch of two-over-twos come in by some developer. It's a whole community we're trying to create here. So we want to do that with terms and colors and materials and the bronze windows, I think Dave mentioned, that they're going to be in the new Lake Anne House, as well as kind of the in-and-out and different materials. We recognize this is in kind of our normal NVR colonial style that we're building, so obviously that's, we're not presenting that. We want it to be compatible with the Lake Anne House and in context with surrounding Reston. That's really our major objective.
The renderings probably, the renderings probably don't show the color of the brick that we're proposing. I just brought two samples with us today. The one color, sort of the olive, is the painted brick that's shown in the elevation. And then the other two is sort of the brownish brick on one end and then sort of a reddish gray brick in the other.
It's sometimes challenging for our renderers, I'm sure you all know and see that, to exactly replicate what we're trying to do. But as also Dave mentioned, this is iterative process. So we've got to get walls built, and we get down to that point of selecting actual colors and materials are going to change it in the next few years in terms of what, exactly, maybe the specific shades. We can look at all those and obviously want to work with, not just you all, but the other building as well in the communities of community.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. So that concludes the remarks that we wanted to make to introduce you to this project. And we would love to answer your questions and start with Dr. Diana.
I'm Richard Doolan. I'm an architect. I'm one of the vice chairs of Reston's Design Review Board. And we've got four other members of our board here today. So it's a pretty good representation of us, and they'll introduce themselves when they get around to it. I have a lot of concerns with this. I think I'm the only member of current DRB that was here when Fellowship House came through seven years ago, eight years ago, whatever it might have been. I forget the exact date. And at that time, the Reston Crescent project was going big time, pushing along. And as we all know, four or five years ago, that completely died. So I'm a little surprised to see that you guys are even including the plans of the Reston Crescent on your drawings here. I've got several points that I'll just go through and make them, and then after the rest of our board makes their points, then we can kind of discuss it. I don't want you to have to try and answer every single thing I'm saying. Let's start with that. A lot of, we try very hard to make Reston, keep the sense of Reston in projects here. Just generally, I'll back up a minute. I applaud everything Fellowship House is trying to do here in terms of keeping the current residents and moving them without disruptions of what the building has done. Conceptually, this is all fine. The problems I have are more with how it's being done. Start with Village Road. I think one of the things, and even on the handout you just gave, is you're still showing an 18-story tower across the street. It's never going to happen. I mean, this is not going to happen. But seven or eight years ago, whenever this came through, there was considerable discussion about how the entrance to Lake Anne through Village Road was going to be perceived. And having two large buildings here, after much discussion, sort of began to make sense. Without the building on the other side, I find this to be a very lopsided design, and I don't think any of us can count on that other building on the other side of Village Road ever getting built. So I think we have to kind of look at that and make this building stand on its own. Therefore, generally, and I'll take some site concerns I have first, and then we'll get some of the architecture. If we want to do one or the other in sequence, that's fine, too. Everyone is saying how they want us to fit into Reston. I mean, the most obvious thing is, you don't take, I forget how many acres this site is, and basically wipe it out. One of the things we've tried in Reston is to maintain our forests, our natural areas, and so on. And this is absolutely obliterating every single tree on however many acres this is. So that's a bad start from my point of view already, that putting a little bit of fluff around the perimeters is not exactly how we consider it to be Reston-like or maintaining a sense of Reston. This is just wiping out any hint of something that's like Reston. This is way more like town center, where you get a couple of street trees and think we've done something wonderful. The setbacks that you referred to of being 40 feet, this room's 34 feet wide, roughly. So six more feet is basically how wide this room is. If that's Village Road to my right, the window wall over here, back a couple of feet, is an eight-story high building. I don't consider that much of a buffer, particularly when you're basically showing a couple of trees, a sidewalk and some bushes. That is not the essence or the sense of Reston that we normally like in Reston. We're usually looking for a much more substantial buffer. We're looking for something that's more forested, not looking like the entrance to an office complex. That's what this looks like to me. It's very simplified landscaping. It's a whole bunch of plants, but they're not going to do anything to shield the building. The other, okay, so the one comment is about the Village Road thing. The other is about completely nuclear destruction of the entire site. There was a lot of discussion in the previous plan about how the people in this building, and some are more ambulatory than others, how would they relate to Lake Anne? There was a lot of discussion about how this building should open up. And I believe, my memory's not as great, we don't have any of those drawings left, I don't think. But it really opened itself up to then relate visually and physically to Lake Anne. You've got one little doorway that kind of relates through about a 30-foot buffer of growth, as we say, for people to walk across. It's not at the intersection. It's ill-placed. It's in the middle of a block, and it doesn't relate to anything except the sidewalk in front. So anybody coming out of that, in other words, this whole concept of this corner has nothing to do with Lake Anne. It just doesn't, it doesn't look to it. It doesn't, you know, a little side door is the only nod you have. There appears to be absolutely no tree. the only nod you have. There appears to be absolutely no tree preservation. Speaking of Baron Cameron, Baron Cameron is one of our few boulevards left. As you drive down Baron Cameron, which I assume all of your team has done many times, I'm sure, you can't see anything except forest. That's the sense of Reston. Everything else is behind wooded areas. Here, you've scraped it all away and come up with, I forget the exact dimension, but with that roadway going around what I'll call the back of your new building, there's not much left of anything. There might be a couple of little street trees along there. And I think the Cold Snake Senior Housing thing that we approved a couple of years ago, there we had to maintain a considerable amount of forest behind it on Reston Parkway for the same reason. We wanted the Parkway or the Boulevard to still look like a Parkway or Boulevard. In this case, there's nothing except this rather large eight-story building looming over Baron Cameron. It'll be the only building all the way down past the Home Depot that will do that. The rest of the thing from all the way to Route 7 is very Boulevard-like with large tree buffers. There was a huge tree buffer with your current building. I think that's going to, is certainly a cause for some consideration of redesign because I think that's a very weak part of this presentation. The future tower across the street, this, once again, that's not going to happen. So this is going to be a very lopsided entry regardless of the realigning to 30 feet or whatever 40 feet you're setting back from the soon-to-be realigned Village. Again, it's about the width of this room. And you're planting a couple of trees in there, some decorative stuff. It's, again, think forested. Don't think landscaped when you're thinking about Reston. That's what we're looking for, is things that look more natural. Everywhere you drive right here, if you drive anywhere around Reston, you can't miss it. That's what's happening here in Reston. There is no sense of Reston in the entire site development. That's another issue from a design thing. Consider the Boulevard effect on Baron Cameron, the large interior open space you have in the middle. It looks a little bit like an urban park. That's something that might be more appropriate in Reston Town Center. I don't think it has much of a place here. It's just going to be another big missing tooth in the smile of North Shore as far as I'm concerned. You're going to look in there, there's not going to be anything but paving. Paving, paving, and about half a dozen trees sort of sprinkled in. I think that's, quite honestly, not responding to anything that is Reston-like. As to the architecture, I think the massing, what you're talking about sticking on that corner so close to the road overshadows all of Lake Anne, all of the buildings there. And it's just physically way out of place. Somehow that has to be addressed in terms of the massing. We've had this with several other applications we've had recently and have asked people to go back to the drawing board and think about what can you do with that? You've got some pretty serious topography there. Slopes downhill. I forget how much it drops from the top to the bottom, 30-some feet, probably from where your building is now down to the street. I think there's ample opportunity to do something that would be interesting architecturally, a challenge architecturally for sure, but that's something that would have more, could be developed to have more of an appeal to Reston and not a huge massive building slammed right up against the road. I think that's as un-Reston-like as you could possibly get until you get to Town Center or the RCIG corridor, which we have no purview over. And every big building they're putting over there comes from right up to the street. And we're doing everything we can to keep that from happening. Hence, that's what I'm saying. Stepping might help. Use of the topography, there's obviously no apparent response to the topography except for the slow driveway you have along the, I guess, north side of the site there, which is a huge Boulevard for, I'm not, interior Boulevard. Again, a couple of little trees sprinkled along, completely lose the Boulevard effect that we have on Baron Cameron. Internally, the, okay, so somehow you need to reduce the visual massing. I'm not quite sure how you do it. The eight-story building slammed up against Village Road and North Shore is simply overwhelming and I think has no place in this part of Reston. So more design is needed. The face-to-face townhouses, just looking at them, Hickory Cluster is a gem. It's one of our flags we wave every time we want to talk about good design. I think the face-to-face townhouses on the interior, where you have the garage entries to the townhouses, that's a large alley. And from all of your drawings, you can see even there, there's no landscaping on it. It's barren. So face-to-face on those townhouses, I'm guessing it's about 40-plus feet between the townhouse spaces, there's nothing. It's just blank. It's boring. It's paved. That's it. It certainly is not, again, very Reston-like. Hardly anywhere in Reston do we have townhouses or two-over-twos or whatever you want to call them, that front on a street, except in Town Center. This is not in Town Center. Everywhere else, every other cluster in Reston, all of them face inwards, whether to a parking lot or whatever. There, one thing that kind of got through here is the Tall Oaks Shopping Center. We had this long discussion with them and they ended up getting nine buildings that actually faced on North Shore, I guess it is, over there too. That was gradually let go because it was the only way they could get their unit count up. And we all finally got tired of listening to the unit count, but that's, we gave in on that one. But we made them step it back and landscape it in such a way that it looked more forested. And it was certainly, I think it's a minimum of 30 feet over there, but we had them set it back. We got into discussions of how many utilities were in the ground, all this kind of mess. So we couldn't put it further back or further closer to whatever it was. But I think the townhouses fronting, they're not townhouses, but the units fronting directly onto the street are not Reston-like. We don't do that. Drive around Reston, you won't see a single townhouse that fronts on a street until you go over to the Town Center. It certainly doesn't belong here, which is right across from the original part of Reston. And to do something this contrary to all of that, I think is a big mistake. The design of the buildings themselves, I think we can get to that and work with that. There's, if Hickory Cluster is an A, I think those elevations must sound critical, but they're pretty bland, pretty plain, and not up to par with what I would expect these to be, should be, what they should be. You said that they, you felt that all of this was contextually responsive to Reston. I beg to differ. I think it's about as far away from anything in internal Reston that you could possibly get with the design. And I'm not quite sure where you'll go with this, but that's, I'll shut up now. Someone else have to make it.
I think if I could respond to a couple of items and then maybe...
I think it'd be better if you heard all of us give us our 15 minutes.
Be happy to. May I just offer one comment though, because it became a whole lot about why we showed the Crescent? And that was really something that staff had encouraged us to do because until it's amended, this is the zoning in the plan that's approved. So that's why we're showing it. So I just wanted to say that.
But you all are aware that's not going to happen?
Indeed.
Okay. Let's check. Leave it up to the rest of you guys. Who wants to go next?
So Charlie, want to jump on?
No, well, I'm agreeing with what you said. It's kind of hard to judge with this drawing that's not what's out there. And it would have been easier to judge how this is all going to look if we had a picture of the existing. I find that a little troubling. Well, I was concerned from the very, when I first saw this with the county presentation about the mass so close to the road. It's, I didn't know if they could move the driveways to move the building to the west or, but I do think the presentation of the county was better showing the view along the Baron that they had the perspective with the trees still there. And that's missing from this. There are trees that are on, I guess, state property that aren't shown on this drawing that do offer a certain amount of buffer from the backside. And is there not a, quite a tall retaining wall on the back, alone that driveway to the garages? Is that sloped down? Is that a retaining wall back there? That, those were my major concerns. I did think some of the color combinations were much better than others. And I think through your work, you've probably come up with the same conclusions that, the other, we were talking about the looks of the two-over-two units. In this picture, the last sheet, isn't there any possibility that all those air handlers couldn't be put on the roofs? I mean, they're all flat pop roof and it just, it makes it, like Richard said, it's just a slab back here. There's, they could do something if it wasn't quite all so mechanical.
Y'all good? My name's Ken Kinnian, and I'm not an architect, but I do sit on the Design Review Board. I live over Water View Cluster, very close to this. So my good friends at Hickory are obviously being affected by this. I have to agree with my colleague, Richard, on one thing. If this is the way the parcel's going to go, all the trees are gone. And that just frightens me to no end. Having gone through a fight over parcel A3 many, many years ago to turn that into a parking garage at the time, the community came out in force. So be prepared for that. And I'm surprised many of those folks are not here today because looking at the amount of trees that are going to be gone from this parcel versus what's taking place at A3 is probably five times as many trees. It's just as heartening to see. And I don't know how you're going to rectify that. I suspect what we're dealing with here again is you have a unit count issue and you have a financing model that requires you to do what is right for your residents in terms of giving them a facility that makes sense to them. You need a financing method to get there, which is to basically scour the rest of your parcel to make it happen, in my opinion. And it's a shame. The massing next to the road, I agree with everybody here. This has got to be shown without the Lake Anne Development Partners plan in place to show that this is truly still a very forested area. And if I were to take that drive to David down North Shore to see this, I would basically be seeing buildings, seeing a lot more sunshine, but no trees. And then all of a sudden, I see the demarcation line of Hickory Cluster going, what in the heck has happened here from 21st century to something that was built in the 20th century? There's just, it's obliteration to beauty in Hickory Cluster. And so there's no transitioning at all from what I can see. And I know this is a rendering at this point in time, but having done this enough times, I see the trees going away. Access to Lake Anne, today, the building basically faces Lake Anne, giving the residents the opportunity to go out the front door via car or bus or whatever, or walk down the hill to Lake Anne. I was hoping we would see some remediation allowing them to do that without a traffic signal. But I guess that's not the case because I think the biggest feature for the residents in this, in the existing building and the new building would be access to Lake Anne. And you basically have pointed everything towards Baron Karen Avenue, which isn't a wonderful view, in my opinion. It's a beautiful corridor, but Lake Anne is where you want to try to put the emphasis, in my opinion. But I understand the geometry probably says this is the best way to get the most out of what you can do. So again, I think you're focusing on your financial models here a lot without taking into the consideration Reston design. The, the townhomes don't really mimic Hickory Cluster very well. I appreciate that that may be very difficult because Hickory Cluster is a very unique architecture. But I was hoping to see far more verticals and horizontals in the townhomes. And as my colleague had pointed out on the last sheet, the back just seems like that was an afterthought, in my opinion. You just basically said, the fronts, I think, look good from a design perspective, but the back, there's, there are no other cues. I just see a lot of horizontal siding. It looks like one big massive office building, in my opinion. So if you can find a way to add elements of some vertical versus the horizontal, that would be very helpful. Because this is what everybody, if you're going to have your corridors of parking and garage parking, this is what they're going to see, just massive amounts of horizontal siding and a garage door. And that's, that's a horrific first impression, in my opinion. So I'm sorry to say, I'm sorry to come across so negative, but, you know, our mission is to look at it from a massing standpoint and from a design criteria standpoint and make sure it does not have a negative effect on the surrounding areas. I have to say, you failed on all the marks. That's just where I stand right now. We're going to have to do a lot of work, in my opinion. I'm done.
Okay. Bruce?
Sure. First of all, thank you for getting together and talking through it. I appreciate it. I'm Bruce Ramel. I'm a layperson on the DRB as well. My observation, and I'm not involved in a lot of other, other projects have come through more recently, is that, I'm speaking out of myself, I've seen a tendency of wearing down the DRB with things that are so challenging in the beginning that over time, things get by. And I just want to emphasize on, based on problems in one or another project, that the fact that it's not something that fits the design guidelines of Reston in the beginning, and there are some steps in the right direction, the fact that it's not as bad as it used to be is not going to be the standard, certainly I'm going to follow here. So my overall, I understand the economic issues you're facing and the challenges in the model that you're taking. But from our responsibility, I think there's a long distance between this being on a model that might work somewhere else in the county and being modeled, this plan being one that fits into, that's in Reston. And having personally feeling burned by similar arrangements, similar presentations, I would be very straightforward. That's going to be, that's going to be a challenge to make all this fit on this spot and not be too, in my mind, urban, thinking urban, not anywhere thinking, not really being a planned Reston. So the specifics that my colleagues have mentioned, I think are, I have similar thoughts. But conceptually, I just wanted to understand, it's going to be, I view this as a difficult thing to accomplish. And I'm not going to be in a situation where I would feel that I would be honest with you by saying that the fact that you make it better, starting where you are, is going to be, I'm going to have to really fit in Reston.
Nick, Nick Georges, I'm a Lanes of Architecture on the Designer Review Board. I agree with everything that's been said so far, but I'm going to reiterate a couple of things that really stood out to me upon first glance here. The experience of driving down Baron Cameron, I think is, to me, the most critical right now. And the fact that you've got this nice kind of Boulevard section, as Richard mentioned, that's getting completely wiped out is discouraging. You've got, you know, tennis courts and the single-family homes across the street that are not, that are impacted and, you know, users of Baron Cameron. So I encourage you to consider that. The other issue I had was with the Hickory Cluster and the way that, you have fronts of the units facing the backs of those units there. I think that's a very incompatible land use arrangement there that needs to be further studied. And unlike Richard probably here, I'm not as opposed to having units fronting on Village Road if they're done properly, similar to Tall Oaks. I don't think Tall Oaks was a complete failure there, but I think it can be done in a certain way to get that to work out because I realize this area is going to involve... Because I realize this area is going to evolve. You've got the challenge of this historic area of Reston essentially, you're trying to do a development that would fit in Town Center, Clarendon, or not Clarendon, but Arlington County in that area. So I think of the context there. And the third thing I wrote down, and I'd like to say, is on Heron House and the detail there, I appreciate you guys are looking at that, but pay real close attention to detail on that building. They've got these planters that are on the corner of each balcony. I think features like that moving forward are what we want to kind of study here, not just materials, but really architectural features and design and what they did have to kind of embody that real kind of niche detail. That's months and years from now, but just something to consider.
Does anybody have any other comments?
I was just curious, the, I realize it's conceptual drawing, but there certainly doesn't seem to be enough parking in the four stories for more than one vehicle for guest, for instance. I mean, I assume the drawing shows a driveway behind each unit, but is that, that's where the second car goes?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it just doesn't look very guest-friendly, let me say, because you've got parking, but then it's quite a long walk. Some of these units you can't get to unless you go through the garages, allowing them to walk around the whole building to come to the... Which is always a challenge with these kind of places, but it just seems...
Each unit has a garage plus the driveway space behind. So each stacked townhome would have two parking spaces. And then we're proposing an additional either 0.5, 0.7 spaces for visitors on site. So the park would be 2.7 spaces per unit. For 70 units would be 175 parking spaces, I think, to park for person. So it's actually greater than the county requirement, so...
Well, that wasn't the concern so much as the location compared to the, you know, it's tough spots.
Right. Again, yeah, I agree that visitor parking up against the Baron Cameron is, will serve some of the units there, some of the parking down. And we've made some revisions to this plan, so it's not currently up to date with regards to visitor parking. We'll come back to you with that.
I just had two other quick comments. I agree with what Charlie said, that if I come to visit and I'm parked in that upper area there, you're, we'll call it rear elevations where your garage doors are, there are no people doors there. So anyone coming to visit is going to have to walk all the way around to come to the front of the building. I think that's kind of an issue. And then a real picky concern, but something that if you really look at Reston, will understand, the poorly located compressors outside of the garage doors are sitting on white gravel. And white gravel, we just don't do in Reston.
It was, it's a conceptual...
I understand. I'm kind of teasing you here a little bit, but white gravel's a no-go. It's got to be natural color, so just keep that in mind.
And I think we can work with you. Jack and I were just talking briefly, we can probably move the air handlers so that they're not visible. Just real quickly, on the relationship to Hickory Cluster, the distance, these units, I think, are buried in the rear, so there's two-story elevations, and there's roughly 120 to 140 feet of distance. Plus, there's a grade change of roughly, I want to say it's 10 to 12 feet, we'll get back to you with the... And there's an existing buffer of bamboo and other vegetation there. So the cross-section that's in the PowerPoint, we're going to update that and be back to you with that information. But visually, I really, I don't even think these homeowners are actually going to be able to see that product, see the front doors and the front elevations of the product. But we'll be back with more detail on that for you. Thank you.
One other question is on this, the drawing of the fronts that you got to show us.
Yes, sir.
If that's what is going to look like when you come down North Shore Drive, which these are the fronts, and that's what you're having, looking at North Shore Drive, that's just not going to fly? I mean, that's... Not so... Anyway, you guys turn now. If any other comments?
The only thing I would say, we appreciate your time. I know that I've taken a lot of notes, I know everyone here has. We are scheduled, I believe, for a work session with you all on April the 17th. So we're looking forward to that. We'll be able to upload next week, you know, kind of some revised materials that, this has been kind of a work in progress as we've worked through a lot of these issues. And, you know, the only thing I would say, we're going to work on everything that we've heard and see if we can roll up our sleeves a bit with you on doing that. I will say though, that I think this is about balance. And the tough thing is that we are trying to preserve these 240 senior formal units. The buildings that are there today are old, they're inefficient, they're not in good shape. And that's a challenge. Another challenge is the fact that we don't want people to have to move twice. I think, you know, to be able to build a building in this phasing manner, I think is a real positive for the community that we serve. And the other challenges that we do have include topography on this site. I think we'll do a better job, we'll be coming back showing some of the elevations that are there today and what we have to work with. And also, what we'd like to walk through with you is that the county had also raised a similar question about the building and its orientation. And we've worked through the county, we did look at a number of different iterations, kind of trying to preserve the phasing concept, but looking at different orientations and happy to walk that through with you. And if there is a way to make some changes, I think we're happy to do so. We were unable to come up with that, I think, to the county's satisfaction, but I suspect you may be a tougher critic, so we're happy to walk you through at least our thought process, have the benefit of your thoughts, and see if we come up with something that would be acceptable. So I don't know if anyone has other things to add or ask questions about what we heard, but I'll let others...
There are only two points I would like to make. We did not include a fly-around in this presentation. You've seen that. And if you think it's beneficial, we can produce that again. It may have the old facade on it. We won't be updating that, but we can give you that so you can get a sense of what the entire site is. And then maybe if I can turn to someone from CPJ to talk more about sort of the topography along Baron Cameron, because there is, the plantings and the buffer that is on Baron Cameron is higher than our site. And we in particular are maintaining that, we're asked to maintain that. So maybe just to give you some information on that.
My name's Hank Box, from Charles B. Johnson. So the site, as you come in into the site, is about 26 feet of grade change from the entrance here as you go back. And as you come across to Hickory Cluster, you are only about four or five feet from the entrance to there. About 14 feet from the entrance to the Hickory Cluster. So there's a lot of challenge with the grades and how you can make that all work. And, you know, with these types of units being on slab, having to have a grade in some fashion, in some other way. We are showing a wall that's along Baron Cameron at varying heights, and we are saving some small tree save areas. And then of course, on the right side with Hickory Cluster, that area is relatively flat. Because we're trying to, you know, build the new building with the old building in place, we're having to maintain the grades as you come in the site and come around towards their side. And then we drop grade. So the corner down by Village Drive is actually on grade with their garage is actually on that same grade level. And then as you come up about 14 feet to the front of, to the front of the massive little Oldie Family Building, so that does kind of fit in the grade pretty well. But the rest of the site, like you had noticed, it has been hyped up.
We've just been joined by another member of the DRB, one of our other architects. Knowing Neil, if he won't have anything to say.
I'm actually relieved.
I am, kidding.
I take that as positive. The only question, I guess, I wanted to ask for you all, you know, we've got a couple different masters here, because we're also working through Fairfax County. And one of the things that I've heard is a concern was maybe, you know, the urban look of that frontage along North Shore Drive. The county has asked us to provide, you know, a sidewalk along there of a certain width, and that is something that they have requested, maybe adds to that urban feeling. I don't know if you have any comment about that. I wanted to make sure as long as we're looking at things, we're looking at everything, but that was something that the county has requested that does add to what I've heard is maybe a more urban appearance.
I think we've done battles with the county before and frequently lose. But that's, they are masters in a sense, but I think what we're still looking for, if they ask you to do a sidewalk, okay. And hopefully it'll tie into our trail system. That would be even better. But the same thing, I'll go back to a comment I made half an hour ago, is things are going to probably have to move around a little bit so you can get a more substantial buffer, and then the sidewalk won't be an issue, it'll just be part of it. And if we use the word forested as opposed to landscape, I think that'll go a long ways with the Designer Review Board. Instead of, like I wave that drawing that you have of the front of the units where it's a couple little bushes and a sidewalk. Except that is not the sense of Reston. We're looking for more, I think. As Bruce pointed out, some things are going to have to be pushed around, moved around, not just recolored or the flyover you mentioned. If it's still this design, I think that's not going to help.
Can you just clarify, your comment on the two-over-twos you had with the rendering, you're not saying it shouldn't look like this from the architect, from the building standpoint? You're talking about mostly between, because it sounded like you said you could work more with the buildings where you're going on the fronts. It's more of what's happening between the building and the street. Is that a true statement or is it basically...
Public comments I made, some others have made too, is the, I'll call them alleys between the buildings where the garage entrances are there. There are no people doors. That's one issue. There's absolutely no landscaping there. It's paved, front of building to front of building. White gravel aside, that's still an issue. And the two compressors that are sitting there, that's pretty boring, bland.
Yeah, I was talking more about the fronts.
Okay, the fronts, again, nowhere in Reston are there townhouses that front directly onto a road.
Right.
Unless you get over to Town Center. That's going to be an issue. I'm not sure how you handle that from a design point of view, but that's, as Bruce pointed out, we kind of backed into that, the Tall Oaks, for a lot of reasons. How many times we had to hear unit count and all the financial issues that we're concerned and so on. We weren't happy doing that. And hopefully you guys can make us happy by doing something. I'm not sure why.
I think that's another challenge we're going to have with Fairfax County, who has preferences for the fronts on the road. So we'll have to work through that also.
Yeah.
And ahead of a work session meeting, I think it'd be helpful for you guys to have the reserve, the set that you have, it's in the county for us to take a look at. I think having some diagrams of how the existing phasing is going to work so we can get a sense of how the existing building will stay on their plan. I know there's a 3D graphic of it, but some more detailed there and more accurate existing conditions with the topo, the trees, what trees are being preserved or removed, and new limits of clearing, what the walls are. That might be a little extreme to a work session, but begin to think about that, because those are the type of things we're going to see, to be more comfortable with how this is going to move forward and that you are preserving trees properly.
Thank you.
Is it, is it possible to, and this is just from my information, to incorporate the county's sidewalk with your sidewalk and along the front of the building so you don't have to have two sidewalks? Will they allow the sidewalk to not be on the curb, for instance, and move back into property a little ways and still be considered a public sidewalk?
We're trying to get to, having a lot of lead walks go straight out down with all these rocks and...
Well, that's why I'm wondering if you, their sidewalk couldn't be incorporated in by the one in the front of your buildings as opposed to having two sidewalks?
Right.
Then nobody's going to walk on it. I don't know. I was just curious if that was even possible, if they would allow you to do that.
They probably won't let it be inside the site, so they're probably wanting to have us do something out to the sidewalk along the road.
And in some respects, our preference between where the two-over-twos are is to have that sidewalk lessen significantly so it looks more like the rest of Reston. And we've been asked to keep a 60, a 6-foot sidewalk with a 4-foot planting strip. Which that ends.
They've done the same thing on Sunrise. They've insisted on a five or six-foot sidewalk that goes nowhere.
At least for now.
So you can see we are...
We understand there are some difficulties with the county's decisions.
Thank you. We look forward to a work session where we can, you know, spend more time on this and add more detail to it so you can understand why we are where we are and we'll see what we can move around.
Thank you all for telling.
Thank you very much.